So we're going to call the meeting to order tonight, Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. We're going to go into, can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss 2.1 personnel matter?
So moved.
All those in favor? Okay, we'll see you in a few moments. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Hi, welcome to tonight's board meeting. We went into exec session before and we discussed 2.1, a personnel matter. And can I have everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. It's wonderful to see everyone this evening and have a nice full room and person and back in the boardroom. Ah, that's great. We're very, very happy and pleased.
We had a picture that Tim was circulating, that Gina found, of us last year at this time in the library of the high school with all the administrators three feet apart from each other with masks on. And we were trying to do this a little differently last year, so this is refreshing.
It is. Very grateful. I don't know if this is really good.
No, not really.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to know if there are any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. We'll continue on. And can I get a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. And then will, can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Six personnel, seven special services, and eight business.
So moved.
All those in, second, sorry. And all those in favor? Thank you. And then at this time, I'm going to move.
Hold on, before you do that.
Yes.
There was something that just happened on the business consent agenda. We accepted a $20,000 donation from the Byram Hills Education Foundation for InstaGrants. And they are now opening up InstaGrants to $3,500. And students are applying for InstaGrants at the middle school and the high school level. So we want to thank them very much for that.
Very much.
And they also donated money to the, for the partial funding of a movie license. This is homecoming week. People at home probably can't see all the lights on the field out there and our field hockey team playing their hearts out. But we are going to end this homecoming week with a B H E F movie night. You're going to be playing Sing 2. So this is for the movie rights of that. So thanks again to the V H E F for all of their support. And we look forward to seeing the InstaGrants this year.
That's very exciting, and we want to accept that with gratitude. Thank you very much. Okay, before we move on, I'm going to actually ask if we can move 13.1, which is new business up now, so we can hear from Chris Angada from Noraki Smith about our audit report. And Chris, if you could come speak with us. Thank you so much.
You too, Lara. Good evening, everyone. I'm Christopher Angada, partner in firm Noraki Smith. On behalf of my entire firm, I'd like to just take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education for your continuing confidence in retaining us as your independent auditors here this evening to present the results of the June 30th, 2022 fiscal year-end audit of the district. To confirm this scope of our services, Noraki Smith was retained to perform an audit of the district's financial statements to also perform a single audit of the federal board programs as well as the activities of the extra classroom. As part of our audit, we contemplated issuing a management letter presenting any findings or recommendations on improving accounting procedures and internal controls of the district. In terms of the conduct of the audit, I'd like to commend the district on a satisfactory closing of its books and records. Excuse me. Throughout the course of the audit, we received excellent audit cooperation. Yeah, I'd like to just thank the district's business office for that excellent cooperation to ensure that the audit process remains smooth and efficient. This year, the district successfully implemented GASB-7 with regards to leases. And all financial reports will be filed at times near or state after tonight's meeting. All of our audit reports with regards to the financial statements were clean on modified opinions, meaning the financial statements of the district presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with our professional standards. The district is in good financial position. There were no recommendations as part of this year's audit. The fund balance of the district and the general fund is within the 4% statutory limit. And from a budget perspective, all budget variances were within expectations. Once again, there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in our audit this year. So once again, another clean audit for the district and, you know, in healthy, in a healthy financial position in terms of the overall financial statements. I thank you all for your time, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? I know we met with you earlier during the audits committee meeting. Okay, thank you so much. And a big thank you to Kelly and Susan. Thank you for all the hard work and effort that went into this.
Yes.
Yeah, so if we can have a motion to accept the audit report. A second. All those in favor? Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Susan, before you go.
Yeah.
Chris, you can go. I'm long-winded, Chris. Get out while you can. Take care, Chris. Susan, just before you go, every single person in this room taps into you for something or the other. And I just want to thank you not only for being incredible about what you do. You don't care when you do it. So there are times where I come here on a Saturday for something and Susan's here. You know, it is, it's a dedication to your work that is unparalleled anywhere. And I just want to thank you so much for not only doing it so well, but for really being so invested in this place. It fills my heart to see you do that.
It's been my pleasure.
You're so good to everyone.
I'm a Byram Hills graduate, so.
Class of what? I knew that. Oh, the board never knew that.
I didn't know that.
She's going to have her 25th reunion. 25th reunion. Yay, Susan. Thank you, Susan.
So. That is awesome.
Well.
But moving on, I don't want to recognize ourselves.
Yeah, I'm doing it. Talk about long-winded. So this is according to the governor's office, October 17th to 21st is Board of Education Recognition Week. I would like to say that we recognize our Board of Education daily because we understand the amount of work that they put into this non-paying position to answer questions of the public, to care, to have goals about how they can outreach to the public even more so than they do right now, which I think is quite a bit. Their relationships with the town and the town liaison meetings that we hold, various committees that they take on throughout the district, PTSA, you know, Mia, Scott are doing PTSA. We had three members there for finance advisory tonight when we were talking with the auditors. We have, they just have countless responsibilities in these roles. And as a superintendent who did sign on for another three years of a contract, it is all due to everything that's happening in this room right here. The people who are coming to present to us tonight and the Board of Education who supports all of this amazing work. So I can't thank you enough for trusting us all the time with your children, with this community, with the work that we're doing for the sake of Byram Hills children. And you're all really good people in addition to being highly qualified for these jobs. So I don't think that the governor had that in mind, but that is my statement to all of you. And I want to thank you because this is, I've committed to this because I think it's the best work that there is. And I think that the product of our labors is fantastic. So I appreciate so much that you take time out of your lives to do that, and I hope you stay on here continually. And just thank you on behalf of all of us and every one of our kids here for everything that you're doing for us. Because I'm a teacher, you know, you have certificates that you have to tape to your fridge that can't hold a magnet anymore. And send me a picture. And I do have to say that I get a couple of texts from board members with the picture of this on their fridge. Something a little sweet for you to eat.
Thank you.
And then these amazing PTSA blankets that can serve as, you know, back cushions or tush cushions, whatever it is you want to use them for. But anyway, they'll be good for you to go out this week for homecoming weekend enjoy. Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much, Jen. And I think I speak for the board when we say, you know, it is a privilege and a pleasure to serve on this board with you and Tim and Kelly and Gina and watching you, you know, the last few years steer us through some difficult times and come out the other side flourishing and watching the kids, you know, be excited about Spirit Week. Very, very grateful. So it makes it very easy and all of you make it very easy to be on this board.
The one thing I will never forget is all of the principals and assistant principals and whoever would help them measuring six feet of distance and putting down dots and everything else. So, yeah.
Well, thank you very much. And thank you for our treats. I'm going to eat this very soon. So it's a nice segue into tonight's special report, our curriculum conversation for the 2022-23 year. This is one of our favorite nights here during the school year. We love to hear from all the building principals and assistant principals and just find out what's going on and celebrate all the hard work that you've put in over the summer. I know you've all met and Tim has met with you. And there's been all kinds of focus groups and trainings and professional development. And we just love to hear what's new for this year. So I think I'm throwing it to Tim. Yes, okay. Thank you.
Do you want to say anything, Jen?
Oh, I said it before. They know the love I have for them.
Right, so thanks. I'm honored to work with this amazing team and thank all of you. So I gave the board, you have the goals document. I gave you a print copy last month, or last month when we met. There was an electronic version in your packet. So feel free to jump in at any time. I'll start some discussion, probably some questions, but this is really your discussion. So if there's anything you want to know, something I'm not hitting upon, or you want to go deeper, just jump in. Let me first start with how we get to this goals document. It starts in the summer when we meet for administrative retreat and where you reflect upon the previous year's work. And we talk about what the priorities are going forward. So we do a lot of different exercises and activities to get to the place where we produce this document. It's always starting with our mission statement. So we have it up here in case Chris knows it by heart, but anyone else needs to refer to it. It is up here. So this is always our North Star. This is what is guiding us as we're determining how to make adjustments to our programs. And in terms of the process for the goals, so it goes from the district mission. Obviously, the Board of Education goals are considered, and we think about what your priorities and what your wishes are. And the administrators write their goals. When they're working on these goals, they're working with their faculty as well. As the faculty develops their professional growth plan, and then that word gets translated to students. So the more aligned that the system is, the better the impact is on that end result, which is our student outcomes. So we work really carefully and deliberately to make sure we're aligning across the system. So that's intentional. So with that, we'll jump into some discussion. And I do want to start with, I'll just keep our mission statement up. I want to go back to literacy and talk about literacy. We've been talking about it at the board level for several months now. And it's been written a lot in the press. Some are classifying this age as the reading wars again. So we cycle through these things. We'll get back to the math wars someday, and I'll be ready for that. But since there's a lot in the press about it, I mentioned to the board and to our community last month that we convened a literacy study. The purpose of our literacy study is to really look at the research on reading and writing and talk about it as a community so that we're not being driven by what the media or what Facebook posts say about reading and writing, but what the research says about it. So we'll be working with two expert consultants on literacy, bringing in administrators and teachers and parents together to have discussions. And we'll be following up in December with a curriculum conversation on that sort of as a mid-year check-in as well. So let me jump in with our elementary principals, and we'll start with that conversation about literacy. So in the context of really thinking deeply about literacy, let's talk specifically about our program. The study isn't about our program or any curriculum per se, but we adopted Wonders three years ago, and that was a pandemic response. We needed a digital curriculum. We had nothing electronic, and teachers were working tirelessly to get their curriculum electronic for kids. We didn't know what 2020 would bring, so we wanted a digital program. We selected it based on surveying and that summer really looking carefully at what was available and something that was strongly aligned to standards. And Wonders was aligned to the standards. So we decided to hang on to that right now because we didn't know what the following years would be. And we didn't want to change too quickly. And now that we're undertaking a literacy study, we want to give some time to that study to happen while we then focus internally on just improving some of our processes. But we, we're continuing our internal study as well. Given that we're using Wonders, we're now in our third year. So I'll ask both our elementary principals to speak to what are we seeing as successes with Wonders? And where do we see as some areas for maybe improvement or some challenges with it? Can you start with Peggy? Do you want to jump in, Peggy?
Sure. So I actually want to talk about Wonders, but I also want to talk about primary learners in terms of Wonders, if that's okay, because I think it will segue in and also shed a lot of light on post-pandemic reality at Coleman Hill. So being new back to Coleman Hill, I've done a lot of thought, put a lot of reflections into what is it that our learners need from us today, which is different than when I left Coleman Hill five years ago. And there's a big component of our world that's post-pandemic that children at Coleman Hill did not experience like children in the rest of our district and its nursery school and in offense Wonders. So I just want to talk about that because we do such a good job in Byram Hills of being thoughtful and deliberate about everything we do for the benefit of every child. Our children that are in Coleman Hill currently, kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, did not have the benefit of being all in like our K-5 learners were two years ago. That's one. Our K-2 children right now are coming into school without having nursery school like you all remember it traditionally for your children or any of us who have raised children have had nursery school. So with that comes a whole other lens of really looking at what our children need in terms of the new, the K-2 cohort of kids. They are coming into our schools with foundational skills that look very different than our learners did that are third grade through 12th grade. For example, we really believe in a constructivist learning theory. That's what our elementary teachers are trained to do. They understand the science of reading, and that's really big in the public right now. But our teachers are skilled in teaching children how to read. Our teachers are very skilled in a constructivist learning environment and developing comprehension along with the science of reading. But we have children right now who don't know their letters, don't know their sounds, don't know lowercase letters, don't have the stamina to get through a school day because nursery school did not look like it did like we remember it. So we are working on all of these things in a constructive learning environment. And what one, well, for two things. The literacy study, what it's going to do for Coleman Hill is it's going to help us really talk about what are we getting in? What does the data look like for our children coming in? And where do we need to strike that balance from reading to learn and leading and learning to read? They don't happen separately. They happen together. Our children getting out of the car in the morning are making meaning of the world. Our children sitting in the classroom are making meaning of the world. Comprehension is built every single day. The science of reading is happening in direct instruction by our skilled teachers. They go hand in hand. And we're helping our children who did not have that nursery school by having to go backwards and fill up some of that curriculum that normally they get in nursery school that they didn't get. That's a big change for us as educators because we have to think about educating five, six, and seven-year-olds who miss some of their foundational skills. In terms of the Wonders curriculum, what Wonders does a beautiful job of is it does whole-class, whole-class instruction for assured reading experiences that are interdisciplinary and that really give every child the same understanding of a read aloud for assured experiences. But a child who's reading on a fourth grade reading level in a first grade classroom can take that read aloud and apply it to things that they understand. But a child who's not reading yet, who's not even on a reading level, can hear that read aloud and make meaning of it the way they understand it. And that's what constructivist learning theory is. It's that we learn based on the experiences in front of us, and our children are the active learners in the process. And our teachers have to be able to differentiate all that. So that's what Wonders does a great job. Where Wonders needs some support is in our skill-based instruction, our one-on-one reading for our children who really are reading at a higher level than maybe their grade level standard and for our guided reading groups. Wonders is not as good as that, but Wonders is very good with whole group instruction for the shared experiences that we want all of our children to have.
I think what you're saying, Peggy, is that there is no one program that covers everything that we want to do.
So what I like to say to our parents and to our teachers is that our curriculum is a tool that we use for instruction, but instruction is really what makes learning come to life for our children. And our teacher's job is to instruct using constructivist learning because we, our children can conceptualize everything they do by the experiences from their home to our school setting. And our teachers have to understand how all of that clicks and works together for the individual child. Our curriculum is a tool to help us do that. There's no one curriculum. We instruct children. We don't instruct a curriculum.
So the program, for example, the use of a program in a school district would be, as guidance, would be a framework.
Right.
So it could be a map, but what I'm hearing you say with kids with different needs, some kids might take a different path to get to the same place.
And that's our job to allow them to take that path as skilled professionals.
So talking about the varying programs, foundations, we've heard a lot about. So can you just talk about what is foundations and?
So foundations is near and dear to my heart. I love teaching how to read, right? But foundations really provides our children with the English language structure that they need for phonics, phonemic awareness. It provides them with the language they need to understand how to read. What foundations does for our children who are advanced learners? It also provides them with the phonologic and morphic structures that really are the gateway to linguistics. Having minored in linguistics myself, I understand how powerful foundations is for our advanced learner population. But our teachers have to refine lessons to meet the needs of children who crack the codes. Otherwise, they would be bored. And that's where we have to compact the curriculum. But that all falls on the hands of a skilled teacher who went to college and learned how to teach reading and also how to teach comprehension. That's why we really believe in a constructivist learning theory at the elementary levels.
Let me jump over to Dave, and we'll probably circle back. Dave, if you could talk, just pick up from that piece, what our teachers do with Wonders, what you're noticing from the feedback as well as that roadmap.
I think one thing I was going to jump in with Peggy is one thing I think I hear teachers talk a lot about is the program moves very quickly. And to the point Peggy's making, kids need different things. Some need things repeated to them, right? They need to, things clarified. That takes time, right? Other kids are flying right away. And so that balance of when 24 kids are looking at you, how do kids, you know, how do teachers manage that all day, right? So I think the program does move quickly, but the structure of our school is the teachers have a fair amount of time to work with one another to figure out what that essential content is. So that really is, I think, exactly related to what Peggy's saying, how they move through that. And I think some of the advantages to Wonders too is there is a common language. So as these kids do come up through the system case five, they hear a lot of the same terminology, right? A lot of the resources, you spoke about the digital component. There's the student workbook, the anthology book, and then also the assessments, right? There's end of unit assessments. There's progress monitoring tools. And I think that combined with the other assessments that we do give us a very good picture of where kids are, which I think is important.
Yeah, you're both are talking about teachers having to adapt to the needs of kids. And if kids are learning, we move them forward. If they're struggling in certain areas, we might have to reteach or find another approach. What are data points we use along the way? We use a lot of data points. Are some formal, some informal? Can you each speak a little bit to the types of data that teachers are using in the classroom to give us that information?
So for years, we used quantitative data, our independent reading inventories. Those are IRIs. You're only on an IRI if you're reading. So our kindergarteners, some of our first graders are not in an IRI.
An IRI.
So it's an independent reading inventory. There can be QRI's in other districts, but we use independent reading inventories.
Shortest set.
Oh, sorry. What is it? It's like, it's like this. And really, our teachers are reading it and queuing every single word to make sure that our children are reading fluently. And then it comes with a series of questions that are explicit and implicit so we can see if children can answer questions that are knowledge recoil, but that also they can answer higher level thinking questions to see that they also are able to do inferential thinking or higher order thinking.
So it's looking at comprehension and fluency as well as vocabulary, phonics.
Decoding.
It's a lot of different.
And that really helps us when we talk about one-on-one conferences with many, which many of you will know during your children growing up. They're reading independent books. Those IRIs are really the driving force, the guide to get us into those books that children can read for independence. They have to be independently reading on that level to understand it. They're in instructional levels, guided reading levels with the teacher giving them direct instruction so that they learn about the reading behaviors for that current level of reading to progress them to the next level and the next level. And so it's kind of like a rubber band. We keep stretching them and stretching them, and the rubber band pulls and we pull it further.
But the IRIs, they correlate to the letter, the lettered reading levels?
Yes, what I would say to parents is don't worry about the levels. Let the teachers worry about the levels. Worry about the enjoyment of reading. But I know parents love to hear what level their child's on. Think of levels as a range of levels. Children should be a level. That's, but that's how we, I think currently in the public, we're talking a lot about that. And that's really not fair to children. We don't want to identify children by level.
And they're all in bands, right? When you look at that document you're talking about, you look at where kids are during certain parts of whatever, you know, spring, winter, fall, of what grade level they're in. So there's a band talking about what they are being instructed on, what is their independence. So when a kid goes to the classroom library, as a teacher, you can say, hey, you need, you should really look at these levels for your independent reading versus when they're doing guided reading, what level are they working on? So there are kind of bands.
And reading levels could also depend on the context of what you're reading. If I'm a sports fan, you know, I could probably read at a higher level a sports book than I might a science book or something else. So that varies as well. So there's a lot that goes into it, which again goes in that teacher judgment part that Peggy spoke so well about.
And there's other assessment. I'm sorry, question?
No, it's okay. Well, it's interesting that you brought up something that obviously around the nation, everybody is feeling, which is learning loss is pandemic, whether it's lack of nursery school or just the different way that students learned over the last, you know, couple of years. Not surprising. But one thing that I hadn't thought about, but I think that may be going on, but tell me what you think in the elementary schools, is that in a way, what it's also done is it's broadened out the spectrum of where kids are in any given class. So you've always had that in elementary because we have, you know, generally kids at all different levels in the same classroom. But now that may be even more of a challenge for teachers because you may still have some kids that come into kindergarten or first grade, and they're avid readers and they can read really fluently. And then others that weren't in nursery school, you may be at a different level. So is that more challenging for teachers? And if so, are there either things you can do structurally or curricularly to try to address that? Because I'm sure it's not easy.
So Scott, that's why the data is so important, because we never want a child to be bored in reading, right? Reading is the crux of everything we do at the elementary level. Our children who are reading above grade level need to get the instruction at the level that they're at as long as the content is appropriate. So that takes time on our teachers' end to make sure that they're researching independent literature for our children at their reading level, but at the developmental level of the child in front of them, the five-year-old who's reading on a fourth grade level. We can't just go into the Wonka Book Bank and pull the fourth grade books out and give it to the child. So that takes time. And our teachers are very skilled at taking those books home and reading them for kindergarten content. But to your question, the varying needs within a class of 25 kindergartners is real. Really real. And how our children are at a concrete or pictorial or tangible level versus children who are at a language-based level is real. And watching them manage groups of learning with direct instruction for children who need direct instruction, there's not many kindergartners who need direct instruction in reading yet. They need skill instruction.
I guess, Doug, tell me how that, how do we best support our educators and, you know, and also is there an expectation modification that's going on nationally because of the impact of?
Well, there are some changes. States are making decisions about phonics, for example.
Yeah.
It's requiring phonics instruction, which surprises me. We've been teaching our, you know, we adopted foundations in 2009 as a formal program. Other states are just getting around to phonics instruction, but you're seeing some things like that. But what we are doing is spending time training our teachers and retraining for those who want it and need refreshers. This summer, we had a lot of teachers, for example, take refresher courses in foundations. A lot of our new teachers, all of our new teachers took courses in foundations at their grade level so that they're training. Let me just jump to Kim. I'll come back to you, Peggy, in a second. I want to bring in Kim Sapon, our Assistant Director of Special Services K-5, who is also focusing on literacy with her teachers. So Kim, can you talk about the types of training you're providing for your teachers and the work you're doing with literacy K-5 for special education?
One of the things that is to piggyback off of Peggy and Dave, that Wonders authors for special education students is WonderWorks, which is a parallel curriculum, which allows for the special education teachers then to differentiate the material for students based on their reading level without compromising the New York State standards. So that's a great. on their reading level without compromising the New York State standards. So that's a great addition to, to the reading programs. It also allows for a little, for more fluidity with students to go from one class to another. If a student no longer needs the support of a special class, they can go into the general ed class and they're still that common language. They're still using, learning the same content, but at a different, at differentiated level within the special class. So students who may not be responding to Foundations, we have teachers that are trained with different programs to, to research-based readings such as PAF, which we're doing K through, K through three at the elementary level. And then we're doing Wilson reading from grades four through up through the high school for students who need that individualized reading support. Both of those programs are research-based reading programs that our teachers have been trained in. We are also going to add training this fall, Orton Gilliam, using the Orton Gilliam approach for all of our special educators, K through eight, I'm sorry, K through five for the special educators, including some of the reading specialists at Wampus. We have reading specialists also at Critten and that will be participating in that training as well.
Can you talk about what Orton Gilliam is and how it's used by teachers?
Sure. So it's, Orton Gilliam does have programs, but it's overall, it's a multisensory approach that can be used with the programs that we currently have, whether it's Foundations, Preventing Academic Failure, or Wilson. So it's using all different types of kinesthetic tools to help students not only learn to decode, but then also, you know, with movement and, and sand writing and different types of activities, which will help the different pathways in the brain scientifically to help them decode.
And strategies that can be utilized regardless of a program, sort of program.
Right, right. It's kind of like the umbrella which PAF, Wilson, and Foundations will sit on.
And because, I mean, as Peggy mentioned before, it's not really the program we have to adapt to. So having a range of either programs or strategies is beneficial to kids.
Well, I think we look at what students are responding to. Some students may respond to Foundations and we could use a multisensory Orton Gilliam approach with Foundations. We may have students who aren't responding to that that need something more prescriptive based on some of the gaps that they may develop, that they're not responding to an intervention. And we could do PAF with the Orton Gilliam multisensory approach, or, you know, Wilson for some of the upper grades. But, you know, it's not, most certainly in special ed, it's not one size fits all. So we figure out what it is the students need and we develop, you know, they'll use the programs to help support them.
Circle back to Dave. I want to go back to Wampus for a moment, maybe get off literacy, unless there's other questions here. We'll be talking a lot about literacy going forward and getting some updates on literacy study.
Is there a leadership component that we can help our students help pedly? I don't know. I know our high schoolers are very overprogrammed, but I know they love helping our community and bridging, I know through sports they go and do it. I'm just wondering, I know there's a math workshop at the middle school. It sounds like there's some gap to do the gap that kids lack socialization going preschool. I'm wondering if it would be helpful and some, I don't know, this is more between us, Jen and Chris and Peggy, but there might be a leadership component where we can empower our older students to help in some way.
Peer mentor.
They have a science, right?
We have our fifth graders going down to Coman Hill in a couple of weeks too, just for like some.
Just to be like an advanced group, so it takes a little more time. I love empowering our students. I love, and I would love to help. It sounds like you have so much going on. We're dying to help you.
I don't know, Peggy, I don't know if we still have the Big Brother, Big Sister program, which we had the high school students going down to Coman Hill. We do reading with the students. Is that coming back? I think that we're trying to get that back. But that's kind of Laura's question too. I think our teachers really need the time and space to do this work with the range of learners in front of them. And that's the whole classroom environment. I'll know in a couple of weeks with them what they need, but I'm trying to go very slow in terms of listening to what, what is the child, what does this child need? What does that child need? What do you need? On a daily basis in the classrooms, really listening to the teachers because the classrooms.
Yeah. I want to know that we hear that. And, you know, whatever supports are necessary, please communicate that.
Thank you.
Sure. I wanted to have Dave talk a bit about the impact of having a school counselor at Wampus. As you listened to what our needs were and allowed us to hire a school counselor last year. So in the second year of that person, and Dave, if you could talk to the impact of the school counselor, Annie Schmidt, and, you know, just sort of describe the role of the counselor, what she does and what it impacts her seeing our kids.
And I love the fact we have an elementary school counselor. So thank you again. I think I said the same thing last year. You know, we, Peggy, myself, Lisa, Jean Marie at the AP at Coman Hill, we've talked a lot about this. And I think counseling by nature is kind of a reactive thing, right? I think of a lot of the time I spent as a counselor at the middle school, some of it was very, you know, something happened, it was a reaction. You're trying to help someone, right? You're working through things with, with parents, with kids, with staff, everything. What I think this, Annie Schmidt and this program has done is kind of created a proactive approach in certain aspects. They're certainly still reactive, but she's proactively teaching kids these traits. I spoke about it last year. I know in February, I believe, we're talking about it again at a board meeting. There's all these traits and she goes in and has lessons with kids. In third grade, they have one whole encore cycle with her. So between September and June, each third grade child will have her for approximately one month of the school year. In fourth and fifth grade, right out of the gates in September, she's doing push-in models, lessons. And that's based on feedback from the classroom teachers. In fourth and fifth grade, what does your class need? And what's interesting, when, when she kind of came to me with that, I said, well, I feel like it's all going to be the same. It's not. The classes actually, because of the makeup of the classes and the dynamics of the classes, they kind of need some different things sometimes. So she's in the classroom doing that as well, which is wonderful. She recently said to me too, it's been a nice, and I think I give some credit to Coman Hill because they really started to introduce these traits at Coman Hill last year as like a trait of the month. And I know they're doing that again this year. She was telling me that the third graders this year seem to be familiar with the language and they can apply it to real life. So we're talking about respect today. The kids are like, oh, I was on the soccer field and, you know, someone was yelling at the ref and someone else, you know, they're giving examples in real life, which I think is refreshing. And I know the one thing we've talked about too is how do we measure this? How do we measure success in a counseling program? And I know we spoke about it last year and I don't quite have the answer yet, but I do have a good data point that I think goes back to my time in middle school during, one of the presenters during kindergarten, he spoke heavily about children need to have a go-to person in school. And I think the unique thing at elementary school is you're with your teacher five hours a day and maybe you're a special teacher and you're with your lunch monitor. And those are really the adults you're interacting with. I think what Annie has brought to Wampus is another go-to person. I asked her at the beginning this year, do you know how many kids you saw last year? She said, I do, 320. She said 320 kids. She has individual counseling, group counseling, or reactive, something happened, right? I said, this was going back, I guess, was it last week? Was it a three-day week? I said, I think on Wednesday or something. I said, do you know how many kids you saw this week? She said, well, today I saw 14. So if we take 14 and multiply it by one, whatever, we're well over 320. But I think that does show some measurement as far as these kids are accessing her and she's in the classrooms. They know who she is. She's continuing to be a rival and dismissal. They know who she is. And for lack of a better phrase, they're not afraid to, to, to use her for help and, and to guide through things. So I think that is a good data point that shows some, some accessibility.
Doesn't hurt that she said she doesn't matter.
Do the kids initiate going to her?
Sometimes, sometimes. Yeah, for sure. Yeah, I know. At least we could probably speak, as an assistant principal and a teacher, she could probably even speak better than I. Her impact with students, you know?
Yeah. I'll definitely say that what that accessibility piece is really key. You know, what you're thinking about going to a counselor, usually it has a negative connotation, right? And, but with Annie, that's not the case. You know, sometimes they just want to express how they feel, share something that happened in their day. But just being able to practice that language is really important for them. Also, you know, sometimes you might think that the only time children will have access to this language, learning about the individual character traits, would be if they have a problem. But the truth is because of the model that's in place where Annie's touching all of the third grade classes, they all get her. When you go to fourth grade, they all can't share in that language. And being, having been a fourth grade teacher, really seeing them use that language was important. But in this role, if they're coming to me, whether for something great or maybe something that they might need help with, I'm able to utilize this language and it's all familiar. And they're able to pinpoint, you know, where, what these character traits are. And I'm able to teach to that point and that behavior a whole lot quicker. I can kind of get right, jump right into it. So that is really has been amazing to have Annie in this role, kind of laying the groundwork for the entire school. And that goes from K all the way up to fifth grade.
We have a curriculum conversation scheduled for February where you'll meet Annie and Dave will come back and we'll talk a little bit more about our Character Strong pilot. And we're continuing to have this conversation about how we measure the success of this group. So we'll be able to go a little deeper with that in February. So thinking of school counseling, let's segue to the next level, Christina. If you could talk about what you've just heard here. What's the evolution of school counseling as compared to middle school and then high school?
Yeah. It's great to hear such wonderful work going on. And I think, you know, at HCC, we see, we see the push-in model working. We see executive functioning groups, affinity groups happening. Such great work. And it's so, I think it's wonderful because the students are becoming very familiar with this kind of work. And now at the high school, we have like a social worker who's looking to form, you know, groups with students. And, you know, we're, you know, SEL is alive and well. And, you know, we're trying to find opportunities to do that very implicitly. But I think also being, you know, having point people, you know, I love, you know, I love Dave's point about having somebody that you can really go to and feel a connection with and kind of bring, you know, bring your problem. The schedule at the high school has been wonderful for us because it's an opportunity for students to not have to miss class, which I know for those of you that have high school students, they avoid coming to the counselor, getting, you know, the help they need because they don't want to miss their academic classes. And the schedule with office hours and lunch has been wonderful. At HCC, we have XPOD, we have STL, we have all these great opportunities for students to get that extra support and to, to find somebody who's a real pro-social person in their life and be supported by that individual. So it's, it's great to see this, this coming into focus, K-12.
And you opened up the Pandora's Box of schedules. So let's talk about master schedules. Let's start with Chris, with the master schedule for high school because Christina mentioned that kids are up in this class. So can you sort of give us some context for that? And start with sort of reminding us why we shifted to a new master schedule to begin with? What was the purpose for that? And then how was it going this year in the second year?
Thanks, Tim. Yeah. So having the district mission up there, it's very appropriate. I think for us at the high school, when we started our work, looking at our master schedule, we linked everything back to, back to that to make sure that we could connect all of the changes we were making to the values which stem from our mission. So looking at lifelong learning, critical thinking skills, leadership, service, global competency, social emotional learning, all of those things are now evident in the master schedule, which is in its second year. So Christina mentioned the office hours, the extended periods in the classroom, even a longer lunch. All of those things send a message to the students that we understand sort of their needs and we value what their experience actually is. And this new master schedule helps to really promote those things that Christina wants to do, but also what all of the different departments are trying to do. And in its second year, we feel like it's still doing what we set out to do with it way back in 2018 when we started the process. We're, we're seeing a lot of the things that we thought were going to start to happen, take happen instructionally in the classroom. And we're really very happy with it. We made some small changes, little tweaks that were based off of feedback from students. And this year, we're going to continue to look at the schedule through the lens of actually leadership. And we're excited to offer a shadow day where we're going to have our faculty members shadowing students with the lens of leadership. Because we were, I was very excited where, when you updated the mission, I might have been the only one who really woke up very excited like it was a holiday, the day after it was done. Because it makes leadership very intentional. And where it used to be a corollary, now it's something that we're really required to make sure our students are prepared and they've had that leadership development.
Chris, one of the functions of the master schedule was to sort of just slow things down a little bit, to be able to go deeper, reduce stress and anxiety with kids. Can you speak a little specific to that? You talked a bit about it, like Christina talking about, kids don't have to worry about missing a class to see a counselor. They can go during office hours or they can go during the lunch period. That's now a reasonable lunch period. Are there other things you're seeing just either anecdotally or other data you're thinking about collecting to be able to help us analyze that a bit?
Yeah. So we do feel like with the, all of the changes that we had to make going through COVID to the different schedules that we had to implement, remember our current seniors, they were ninth graders when we went out in March of 2020. So they actually had to adjust to three different schedules. This is the second year that they had it in it. But even though we're so far removed from that original schedule that we have, you could actually feel like the, the pace of the building is much calmer. The start of the day where you used to have kids running to get in the building, now you don't see that as much because we have the office hours there, which really allows the kids to breathe as they start the day. So kids are still going to get that extra help with their teachers, but there are times when as parents and you know your kid needs that a little extra time sleeping in. So we have that option at least now where we didn't before. Lunchtimes, we're actually seeing kids socialize, participate in intramurals, and just actually enjoying being around each other, which we didn't always get to see before.
Have you noticed any feedback from academic departments about, I mean, one of our concerns about the master schedule was you don't see kids every day and you have five classes a day instead of seven or eight. And they're longer periods, not as frequent meetings. What has been the feedback and impact of that from your observations so far?
Yeah. So it was interesting when we were going through this, every department had a different take on it. And I would say my colleagues, Lisa Pellegrino and Melissa Stahl, in those departments, they were probably the most concerned about not seeing their students in consecutive days. So they did so much work with their, within their departments to prepare for it. And I'll let them speak to what they've been seeing. But from my lens and the data that I'm getting, we don't really see that that has had a negative impact whatsoever.
Yeah, I'll jump over to Lisa to talk about it, but I'll tell the board I'm doing in this, my part two of my assessment report. But you saw the Regents data that I shared with you back in June, and our math scores were equally as high and I think actually higher in the mastery level on the level five. This should be in the last year.
Yeah, Lisa note.
In the algebra region. So it didn't have a negative impact on student achievement on the region, so at least as one benchmark.
And this, this is important because I'm seeing the connection between what Peggy's talking about with kindergarten, first and second grade teachers and the high school teachers, where you're saying the teachers need time, right? Just like you did with the high school to try to figure out how are we going to adapt to these challenges, right?
Can you give a little lens of window into the math classroom? What has shifted with longer periods? Just a couple of highlights and then I'll follow with another question.
Sure. So I can tell you, I went into an Algebra I class today where there's a push-in model. So there's a teacher that is the, you know, classroom teacher on the schedule. And then there's a push-in that alternates between two rooms every day. But both teachers are looked at as, you know, a main teacher and they kind of transition seamlessly. One of the things that came out of the workshop that Chris is talking about with ID Core is an activity sheet. So the students will have an activity sheet that guides that 64 minutes. And what you'll hear the teacher say is they no longer think of it as 64 minutes of time. They think of it as like three 20-minute segments or four 15-minute segments, rather than it just being this long continuous thing. So today, the first 15 minutes, the students were involved in a rich task on what Tim knows, we're doing a book read in our math department. So one of the techniques that came from the book read is vertical non-permanent surfaces. So the students were up there in groups working on that rich task. So the students were up there in groups working on that rich task. The next, I'll say 15 minutes were linking that rich task to the content for that particular day, highlighting key vocabulary. And then the students went back into their groups to do a series of sorting activities with some, some cards the teachers had put together. And the two teachers kind of each transitioned in and out throughout that time. And you will see sometimes they'll break the class up into smaller groups, sometimes they'll keep them together, but it's always in chum to chum.
Do students complain about, I mean, the way you're describing that class, I would think it's an active classroom.
Tim, no one ever complains about math. What would you complain about? But I will tell you, they were, they were all up on the board today and, you know, they, they were still talking about the activity even when they were in their seats. So, and the teacher was very careful to say, I'm not going to give you the answer because I want you to keep thinking about this until we come back.
So talk about the, so we're in our sixth year of shifting the math pathways where we changed when we start to accelerate students in the middle school. Very deliberate in why we did that. I'll have Lisa just repeat that reason why. But also, we want to be studying our trajectory and are we meeting our goals? Is it serving our regional purpose of why we shifted to that approach?
So the reason for the shift was to promote more students taking more math as they went through their high school journey and more advanced levels of math. The important shift that caused this actually is not so much the acceleration change itself, though that's certainly a part of it. The biggest change was to the instruction. And so what our teachers then shifted was really being able to differentiate within the classroom. And that included differentiation on lessons. You might have students doing different lessons in one classroom at one time, different homework assignments, different assessments and different rich tasks that they would work on to present to the class. So all of those things that start in sixth grade and work their way up through high school are really what has allowed us, I think, to be so successful on the Regents and otherwise. So the Regents is one metric that Tim gave. I certainly will tell you, we were, we were pleased with the results last year. It's the algebra teachers really worked hard for that. I can't say that enough, they really did. You know, Peggy talked about the students coming from all different situations and that was true in the high school as well. Another metric that I think is important, so just taking a look at this year's data relative to the previous years, we have anywhere between five and seven percent more students taking those higher levels of math, including calculus, AP Calculus A B and AP Calculus B C. So we are not seeing, you know, students, we're not seeing the drop off that we might have seen before and we're seeing students stick with that higher level for longer.
So despite the pandemic?
Despite the pandemic.
Is there any parallel? I mean, every subject is different and just different paths and some subjects lend themselves a little bit more than math because math is still linear. Like you can't go to B C campus if you haven't taken the prereqs.
Correct.
But you could potentially take AP European History if you didn't take AP US History. That's perfectly rational. But are there any parallels to other subjects in terms of thinking about like the path of acceleration, which we often don't think about that much? Because many subjects don't have it until you get to high school. Science does, but it's a little bit different because there are different facets of science. But just, I don't know, any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think from my perspective, we don't accelerate except in science. In our courses, although we have electives that kids could take at different times. So I think some of it just might be the complication of scheduling, Chris.
So are you talking about acceleration like within a ninth grade language arts class? Because that's what we're doing in math.
Just programmatically. Just out of curiosity, because math, we, you know, there's a lot of time spent like looking at it and tweaking it, but just is there any parallels to other?
Melissa has maybe a thought.
So I can talk about world languages. We have some students who choose to take on a second world language and they, we don't have an acceleration, but we find if a student is in their sophomore year of, let's say, Italian and they want to take on a second language, they very easily move into level two because they understand the grammatical structures of a gendered language. They understand the conjugations are how they function and they just need to know what that information is. They're like sponges. I have two girls in my freshman class right now who were Italian students taking Spanish for the first time and they're actually at the top of the class because they understand all of those concepts. They understand exactly what Peggy and Dave were talking about, illiteracy and all of that information that was programmed in them so young, they get that, that much quicker and now they're doing it in three different languages. So that's acceleration that we have. And then many times those dual language students can even jump another level in with, between. So they'll start in level two, they'll skip level three, go to level four because there's the flexibility there.
Let me jump to Pete talking about impact of pandemic. So we know the fine arts was highly impacted. You really couldn't do certain courses, couldn't sing together or the kids couldn't play certain instruments and things like that. So Pete, if you can just give us some thoughts on where we are now given impact of that and what your vision is to make sure we're back on track with our amazing fine arts program?
Yes, of course. Thanks. Well, one, you might notice that around the room, around the boardroom, there's art again. So we have, we participated in the Armonk Outdoor Art Show this past month and that's the first time we've been able to do that since before the pandemic. That's an example of the strive that the teachers are making in terms of sort of regaining some traction with our program. It's the visibility piece, it's the participation in the act of art making and music making. Tomorrow nights, we are starting, tomorrow morning, we're at 7:30, the jazz band is starting at the middle school, which we haven't had since pre-pandemic. You know, we've already had auditions for the high school jazz band, jazz choirs up and running, they're performing plum laude. We're doing recorder again in the third grade, so that idea of musical independence. All these things that we couldn't do or they couldn't play these instruments, you know, to speak to maybe some of the challenges that we've seen and how we're responding. We're responding by just gaining some traction with our program, by bringing in artists, by, by doing student travel again. So their high school group is going to the Music in the Parks in May. So there's these types of things we'll be playing community a lot. The thing that we're looking at in terms of data points is really the retention of students within the program, specifically instrumental music program. So to give you an idea, there are approximately 150 students, grades six through 12, participating orchestra, 150 students, grades six through 12, participating in band. Those numbers, we've, we've just noticed a little bit of a decline in retention. For instance, I've got, you know, fourth grade students that there are, I think, only seven students right now that have opted not to participate on an instrument. But the numbers are down from fourth to fifth grade, the number of students that have not been continuing in fifth grade. And there's a lot of reasons for that that were brought on by the pandemic. One of those reasons might be that the students were not set up necessarily for success and no fault to the teachers, but just the circumstances surrounding the pandemic didn't allow the students to try the instruments the way they do when they normally select an instrument. The student that's playing the clarinet, the teacher couldn't really advise them on their obesure because they're wearing a mask covering with a little hole where the valve pieces going through. So they couldn't help them. So what happens is sometimes the students aren't on the right instrument for them. And so maybe their potential isn't there for that piece and suddenly the enjoyment factor falls off and the whole idea of performance and showing their skills, they didn't really have as much of that as we would normally have. So all that's coming back now with the, with the loosening of those restrictions and, and we're seeing tremendous growth. I will tell you, in the fifth grade chorus, and we have almost 100 students electing to be in the chorus in fifth grade. That's in addition to the general music class. So there's a really great silver lining, but that's the pandemic and not general.
Coming back.
It's coming back, right? So I took a long path to get back to the middle school. So we're there, about the schedule, but I also want to let Lara know that we're like about 45 minutes into this conversation. Let me know if you want to wrap it up after this. And I know we have a long agenda, so I could go on for two more hours, but I know they don't want to and you probably don't. So let me come back to the middle school and then if we want to wrap things up, that would be great. So Kim, you also shifted to some changes in your schedule as a result of the pandemic, some things that were sort of holdovers that you felt benefits. So can you talk about some of those items and what's changed this year in the schedule?
Sure. Okay, so we brought in a new schedule last year that we thought really supported what we think our mission at the middle school is, creating active learners, healthy risk takers, making sure that we provide the appropriate rigor and also take really good kids, a care of our kids' wellbeing. And that schedule we knew was a great first start, but we also wanted to consider how we might want to change it for this year, what modifications should be, we should make. So we sat down with teachers and also with students and got their ideas. And some of the things that we walked away with were easy logistical pieces, like they needed a little bit of a longer lunch or S D L, Student Directed Learning Time, was also so helpful that we wanted to extend that as well. We also walked away with a sense last year that we needed to build community. Our HCC community was there, but our kids, there was some inconsistency in their lives for the past two years and how they communicated, how they socialized, how they worked together. Walking into this year, we wanted to make sure we also provided as many opportunities to build and foster the community as possible because that's what middle school is all about. So that being said, we took a special look at Student Directed Learning Time and the X Pod and what modifications we might make from that. So for Student Directed Learning Time, there was student choice, kids could choose last year each day what they were going to do. And we felt that was important, but we also heard the teams talk to us about the importance of seeing their classes again. So we brought back something called call back where some parts of S D L will be when the teachers, the teams could bring their classes back. We also heard from the teams and kids how important that team structure is. We know that's the core of our middle school. So we also built in some time that they could have team time and do team activities together. And then finally, we kept the student choice time as well where, again, there was enrichment, there was also academic support, there was a component with executive functioning that we could help kids with organizational support. We also allowed the book clubs and intramurals. So all of that still existed, but we brought it a little bit more balanced so that there was a structured V S D L, there was structured time for our kids and sometimes they had choice and sometimes we were also addressing some of those other needs that we thought were necessary out of the middle school.
And our, our day starts with 15 minutes of X Pod where our kids are in small groups by team with either their team teachers or other faculty members to create that community, to have that go-to person that we've been talking about all these years through our kindness program and through our speakers. So there's an additional person that our students can go, can go to. So this is what I call the pandemic promise, things from the pandemic that panned out for us that, that, that our students now look forward to. So this 15 minutes, this 15 minutes in the morning is time that has morphed and evolved into our executive functioning work with our kids where kids can be organized, they can email their teachers, they can, through the help of our technology department, be on their student portal to see what their grades are, what assignments they're missing and do that all preemptively before their parents find out. You know, we have theme days, we have theme days that we're working with our students. This year, we've added a, a new layer, we call it individual investment time, where we're having our students pick a goal that they want to work on and report out to their parents once or twice a year in a video and submit it out.
Are we supposed to know about this?
Not yet.
I'd just like to comment before we end that the changing of these schedules at the middle school and high school was something that happened as a result of our administrators being really brave at looking at the data and just knowing that there was something wrong, right? Something wrong in the way we were asking kids to perform their day, right? So the first brave step was allowing an outside group to come in and help assess our kids and find out what was the root of the issues that were bothering them. And then never during this pandemic did you stop. And you made renditions of these schedules and continue to do so and continue to look at, when you look at S D L and how that has now morphed into three different things, you're never stopping in looking at how to continually refine, reflect, revise, which is what we do. I would, I would say that it is one of the proudest things, one of the things I'm the proudest of in our school community. So thank you for doing that. You didn't have to. Nobody asked you to. It was just your intuition that you needed to get to the root of how you could best help kids and you don't stop doing it. So thank you. This pandemic had nothing on you.
Pandemic promise.
It's great. Thank you. Go home and get a really good sleep. See you in five hours.
Thank you all so much. Take a break, everybody.
That was wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you. That's so special.
Thanks, Tim. That was great.
Let's go to special report, number three, budget versus actual expenditure analysis. Kelly.
Kelly. So part of the, my goal this year was to do a budget actual presentation to the board. So I've tried to simplify it as much as I can to just be able to talk to it further. Finance advisory committee members may remember some of the categories of this presentation, but just want to kind of give you a quick broad overview of the budget, if you haven't heard it enough from me, and then kind of working through a budget and how closing a budget on a year-to-year basis works. Just quickly, the largest category is what you've heard from me before, salary and benefits. So in this presentation here tonight, you're going to see a bunch of categories. So just keep in mind that everything's salary related is in the salary category. So your studio maintenance salary is in there, your bus driver's maintenance. So technology is all in that sat salary category and benefits. Just keep that in mind as we go forward. But our top five expenditures in terms of budget, obviously salary and benefits, maintenance operations, you know, the upkeep of our facilities and our fields and our buildings, special education and technology. So salaries, 53% based on our collective bargain agreements and our employment contracts, 25% of it being our benefits, you know, your health insurance, your dental, your unemployment, your workers comp, 4% operation and maintenance, again, the maintenance, cleaning of our buildings and utility costs. Another 4% is our special education costs, you know, speech you're hearing, your students that we send to schools tuition-based. 3% being your, your Andrew's budget being computer repair, support, technology, purchasing of computers, equipment. 3% debt service and our remaining one bond. And then a little over 1% for transportation, other and transfers, you know, our bus replacement and repair, our capital improvement plan where we upkeep our building on a yearly basis. And then, you know, the other category is insurance, the legal auditing, all that fun stuff. And then there are many other, less than 1% of the budget, athletics, security, curriculum, B O Cs in our building budgets. So that's kind of as a whole, here's just a quick summary based on percentage in terms of each category. Okay, so the budget process and how it works, it's important to explain this because it's going to be confusing if I don't. And why is there a negative number, you'll say? So when you, when you, when you do a budget at the end, oops, at the end of the year, say you order something in June, usually doesn't come or can come into the following budget into July. So that crosses over a budget. So 2021 purchases go into the 2021 budget, 2122 budget. So that was about, right here, about $1.3 million. We carried 2021 purchases into the 2021 budget, 2122 budget, excuse me. Throughout the, the budget process, there's budget transfers. So, you know, there could be transfers for, from supplies to equipment, from supplies to textbooks, for instance, and that happens during the budget process year, during the school year. And we end up closing the books, we, we carried over 21 point, right here, for the 2122 budget, we carried $1.3 million of purchase orders from last year into, into this year, 2223. So the difference between those purchase orders is a, is a decrease of $83,000. So it's, you carried 1.2 on the screen, you carried 1.2 in purchase orders from prior year into 2122, you carried 1.3 from 2122 into 2323. So that difference is $83,000. It'll make sense. So again, these are the categories that I just, I created to make, you know, this, this presentation and finance advisory committee members, when I present the budget to them or we talk about drafting the budget, these are the categories that I usually present. Salary benefits and then pretty much every department. The only, the only thing that kind of stands out for you right here is you'll see B O Cs, that B O Cs category in leases, G A S V eighty-seven. The auditor spoke about that in our audit committee meeting this, this afternoon or tonight. You'll see a big difference there. That's really just allocating the district current leases, copiers, G A S V eighty-seven, long story short, you have to include your total amount of lease into the current year, to this year. That's why you see such a large increase there. It's not that it wasn't budgeted, it was just allocated by department in a different way. So G A S V eighty-seven, you got to put all into one category as a lease. So if you look at the two category, two, two sections here, your current year budget, your last year's budget, excuse me, $95 million, and then the changes throughout the year. Again, this is the, this is the transfers, the encumbrances of purchase orders on a year-to-year basis. This third category is the actual expenditures. Now you'll notice special ed, for instance, you'll see a negative $50,000. That's not that special ed budget was negative and was in a deficit because there, there's salaries in that budget code. Okay, so it evened out, it wasn't negative, but in terms of this presentation, because salaries is separated, it shows as a negative. That makes sense? But as a whole, if you look at the total budget and our actual expenditures, we underspent the budget by $588,600. Now that's budget to actual expenditures. Obviously you don't want to, those lines don't want to cross. You don't want to spend more than your budget. And historically, we And historically, we've obviously been in that position. You don't want this blue line to go over this green line. And we've been pretty, towards the last two years, we've been really close in terms of budget expenditures, which is something we want to do. We want to be close to what we budget. So we've talked about what we spent. Now let's talk about the revenue side, how we paid for it, okay? So we budgeted to you a tax levy of $84.4 million. We received $126,000 more than we budgeted. We did not overtax. We didn't, you know, collect more than we should. We have split properties in the district where they pay a portion to, let's say Chapaguan and a portion to Byron Hills. They pick which school they want to go to, but they still pay that portion. So that was an increase of $126,000 as opposed to the budget, you know, the tax levy we present to the voters.
Back up to the, they go to which school they want to go to. I don't want to mislead people.
When you move into, yes, okay. So when you move into a new house and you have a split, that's a good point. When you move into a new house and you have a split property, say it's split with Chapaguan and Byron Hills, you have a choice to either attend Byron Hills or attend Chapaguan. So you pay a portion of the school tax to each district.
So there are particular properties that are, have that right?
Yes. There's a good amount of properties that are split and have that decision.
Regardless of where the child goes?
Do they pay the same split regardless of where they actually choose to go to school?
They pay, yeah. Do they pay the difference between what?
Do they pay the same amount to Byron Hills and Chapaguan regardless of which district they attend?
Yeah, they don't pay less per student, you know, like they don't pay less to us. So we recoup that money from Chapaguan.
Yes.
They pay it to Chapaguan.
And we get it back, right.
If they choose to go to Byron?
Yeah, all the way around works still.
Okay, so but if they don't choose to go to Byron, we get nothing?
Right, it's not a property.
Right.
And then do they designate?
They'll get a percentage of property taxes, but.
Right.
Is it a one-time designation, like when they move in? Or can you split off between?
No, you can't do it every year, yeah. Right, if it's a house is sold, you can't go back and forth, yeah. That'd be interesting. State aid, we got a little over $100,000 additional in state aid. That was really due to a BOSIs aid. We budgeted, we thought we spent a certain amount of BOSIs, spent a little more. Then we got a little more in excess cost aid for some special ed students. So that was, that was an increase over the budget of about $180,000. Pilot, about a $15,000 increase from our budget. There is some changes with one of our pilots, Engel Burnman, it's just a percentage. It's based on the payment and a percentage is different on a yearly basis of our share of it. So that's that difference there. Huge number in terms of additional other revenue. We budgeted $965,000. We did get significantly more than we budgeted for county sales tax. We budgeted about $550,000. We got $1.1 million. So a lot of spending in the county and we get a share of that. So that was a large increase. And we did increase that revenue projection for next year in this year's budget. Also, we got some funds or allocated to get funds for FEMA. So that's that additional, that works in that $1.9 million. But the majority of that is that additional county sales tax that we received.
Which I remember when it was less than $200,000.
Yep. And a couple of years ago, they increased it by 1%.
But do we get federal fund? I thought it actually did come in.
Okay, this is, we did not get it yet.
Okay, that's what I thought.
But it's been allocated to us, so.
So therefore, it's recognized because we don't have the cash yet?
Right. But we're getting it.
Okay.
That's been promised, okay. Okay, so when you add those, that total up of the additional tax levy, state aid, pilot and other revenues, it equals $94.5 million. Now our actual expenditures are $94.571, okay? So we budget to use $922,000 in fund balance and about almost $2 million in reserve. But since the difference between our actual expenditures and our revenues earned is approximately $10,000, we only really need to use that $10,000 from reserve to balance the budget. I messed it up. Hold on. To balance the budget between actual revenue and expenditures, okay? And you heard this from the auditor, the auditor committee, about that difference. I was hoping to explain it a little more than he needed, okay? So here's a look at actual expenditures and revenues. Again, this is one where you don't want that blue line to go over the, this, whatever color that line is. You could see in 13, 14, 14, 15, it did. So we did dip into reserves to balance that budget.
That was before you were here, Kelly.
That many years. Take a look at the last three years. You'll notice we've been closer to that line, which is where you want to be when you're budgeting. You want to be very close to what you're expecting. So besides balancing the budget, there's also things we need to do on a yearly basis, okay? That balancing the budget, that $10,000 we have to deal with, expenditures and revenues, they have to balance out. You want to maintain your 4% fund balance. You're allowed to have 4% of the following year budget as kind of an undesignated balance, which we want to do. We also need to fund our EBLR. So EBLR quickly is, we have employees that still contractually are able to cash in their, their unused sick days and vacation days when they retire. So we account for that in this reserve to pay it right up. Doesn't affect the budget. Fund our 2122 tax certs on a yearly basis, you know, we get those every year. This is need to allocate money to fund those reserves. So we're adequately covered in case those come to fruition. And then finally, the TRS reserve, just to add additional funds to that in case there's a large increase in the rate for TRS. So it requires $2.1 million. That might sound scary, but just hang with me. So again, $10,000 for the balancing the budget, $220,000 to maintain that 4% fund balance, $35,000 for that additional EBLR that we got to cover those sick and vacation days, $1.1 for insurance, and $731,000 for that TRS. So that money came from insurance and unemployment reserves, okay?
One quick second?
Yeah.
So the 4%, oh, it came from the 4% fund balance, so that came from the insurance reserve too?
Yeah. So this might be, I'm going to jump to the end right here. So the gist of it is, in order to balance the budget and do this, these reallocation of reserves, we had to dip into reserves, $159,936. So that was the difference. We needed to pull from reserves $160,000 to be good. Where that comes from, if you take a look at, these are the balances right here on the left side. So we have $20.9 million, oops, $20.9 million. This is the interest earned. It has to be allocated by reserve. So you'll see we earned about $71,000 in interest last year. So really, it's the shift from insurance reserve and unemployment to tax surcery, TRS and EBLR, okay? It's that shift, that 200, the difference is $230,000. That's balancing the budget, 70, I'm sorry, $10,000 and the $220,000. That's how you get to that $230,000. Now, why it's only $159,000 is you're adding back that interest, okay? So the gist of it is, we needed to dip into reserves to cut, for $160,000 on it to balance the budget and allocate to the reserves that we need to.
That's very clear. Thank you so much. Seriously, these visuals make it very clear.
It's okay. It's a lot of thought.
Thank you for all.
Scary amount of thought. But I hope, and then just, you know, it's kind of early, it's October still. But we started to start thinking about the budget. We do have some factors coming this year, TRS, ERS. ERS has already increased to 13.1% from 11.5. So there is an increase in the ERS rate. TRS, I assume, will increase as well. So that's something we're going to have to take a look at in the budget process. Swish tip, a really impressively minimal increase last year at 1.5%. I would imagine that would increase, Jen's on the board, hopefully she can keep that down.
You just reduce cupcakes.
We'll see where that, yes, that's true, that's true. So we'll see where that goes. Medicare reimbursement has increased significantly this year, up 17% from the prior year. So that's something we're going to have to look at. I'd imagine that would increase again next year. And then utilities, gas, electric, you know, you can look at your own homes and the increases in gas and electric. You know, we are in the process of looking at a solar option and some alternate energy. We're also participating in a bid for natural gas as well. So we're hoping that comes out some good results. But those are, you know, a couple of fun things to think about in terms of the budget process going forward.
Kelly, maybe your goal would be to get us to a green ribbon. You know what a green ribbon is instead of the blue ribbon?
Both. Why instead of?
The green, no, we have to keep the blue ribbon. But the green is, is.
Sustainability?
Sustainability, yeah. You're on your way, Kelly.
Good, cut some trees down.
The application.
Oh, cutting trees.
That's how it works.
Put it at the top of every tree.
I don't want countries either.
Thank you. Any questions for Kelly?
TRS and ERS, is it trailing three years? Is that how they count this?
Three to five.
Three to five?
Yeah. Yeah, I would imagine it would go up.
But maybe not dramatically, but because it's like a slow progression. Over the course of the next few years, it could.
So with the tax levy, if it's over 2%, you can include it in your tax levy. So I can almost guarantee it will not be over 2% if I had to guess.
Interesting.
We'll see.
All right, thank you, Kelly. All right, moving on to number 12.1, unfinished business, the assessment report part two. Tim, back to you.
In line?
For that.
Where are we with assessment data? So the last time I spoke to you, I couldn't really speak publicly. The data was embargoed. And I did not share anything with you. So I'm going to share some stuff with you. You have this whole assessment report in your packet. And I'm not going to go through every slide. I'm just going to highlight a few things for the public. This report will be available on our website. It's under the curriculum instruction tab, drop down the standards and assessments. This will be there. And certainly, if you have more questions, I will return for future assessment reports as well. But we did look at some of the data. You're familiar with some of this data that I shared with you once the embargo was lifted and now I can talk about it publicly. So first slide I'm going to jump down to will be, I believe, slide, let me go to slide eight. Eight is our results of our grades three through eight testing last year in 2022. Looking at ELA and mathematics where we test students in third through eighth grade. That green band is where, is where we want our students to be at levels three and four. And that's reaching or.
Reaching proficiency?
Or exceeding proficiency. So the way to read this chart is simply, I'm turning my laser pointer. So we have ELA is up here and this is third through eighth. So third grade, we had 80% of our third grade students reach or exceed mastery on the state test in 2022. So as you go through this data, these are the results of that. Now, they don't mean a lot out of context. We have to do some comparative data. So I'm going to show you some data longitudinally and I'll show you some comparison to how we're performing regionally. That's what I want to highlight in today's presentation. One thing you'll notice is probably the standout here is fifth grade ELA. And that's something we're looking at. You'll see, though, the impact of that longitudinally, what does that mean for our students as they progress? But that is something where I'm suspecting that there's a gap in the curriculum, that we have to look at some standards we're not addressing in the curriculum. That's where I suspect that's coming from. Nonetheless, you see overall, I want to point out one more thing is the eighth grade scores. That is only including the students who took the Math 8 assessment. It does not include students who took the Algebra 1 assessment. So that cohort was taken out of this particular data. If you were to put that back in and look at the students who passed the Regents exam, that would go up by five points. You'd be at 83% reaching or achieving proficiency. I think it's in that ballpark if I recall. Let me also just do a little caution before we go forward and look at comparative data. So in 2018, New York State revised the state test. They restructured it, redesigned the test and aligned it to new standards. So any comparison to years before that doesn't make sense. So I took out that data. We used to do that comparison for many, many years. So the tests were redesigned in 2018. They were repeated in 2019 with the same design. 2020 happened and there were no state tests in 2020. In 2021, New York State did not want to administer the test, but they were not given the waiver from the federal government. So they had to administer tests, they reduced them. They shortened the tests. They actually put items that were previously released for practice onto that test. So 2020 data, 2021 data, I also believe is not relevant to look at. And then last year's assessment in 2022 was back to the original design. So the three years we have right now compared to data would be 2018, 2019 and 2022. Just so you know why I'm dropping 2020 and 2021.
This is both ELA and math?
Yes. Yep, yep, three through eight. So looking at a little bit of proficiency over time on slide 10. This is looking at our English Language Arts assessments and looking at the change when you're looking at 2018, 2019 and 2022. So third grade, for example, you can see the bars of our students reaching proficiency over those three assessments. And that's a total net gain of plus seven percentage, more students reaching proficiency in third grade. That's, those are different students, though. I'll look at cohort in a moment. Those are just the third grade results year to year. So you have to assume there's going to be some difference in just the makeup of the students each year. But generally, we would want to see us getting a little better every year and trying to get more students reaching proficiency. In fourth grade, even though there was a decline from 2019 to 2022, it still overall went up eight points from 2018. You see a little bit of flatness here in fifth grade. That's something we're looking at. Why is that a little lower than third and fourth grade? Again, I think, I suspect it is to some gap in standards. And we'll look at the math comparison in fifth grade and you'll see a difference. Sixth grade, you see a bit of a drop there in sixth grade from 2018 to 2022. But when we go back and look at our ranking, you'll see what, how that shakes out. Not much of a change seventh and then eighth grade, just going up about a bit in the end way. Now let's look at the same group of students. That's what this chart is showing. So if you're looking at that first row from 2019 and third grade, those students last year were in sixth grade and they went up 13 percentage points from third grade to sixth grade. So they tested in 2019, they were third graders, 72% reaching proficiency. The same group of kids by sixth grader at 85% reaching proficiency. But we're hoping for, to remember, the point of three through eight tests is not that every year students should be at the top, but identifying students who are not yet reaching the standards, building up their foundation, doing interventions, so that by the time they end middle school, they're ready for the high-stakes test in high school. That's sort of the whole purpose of three through eight tests, is to find gaps in knowledge. So we want to see students going, more students reaching proficiency by the time they end middle school so they're ready for the rigor of high school. That's our ultimate goal. So that's why looking at longitudinal data is to see how their students perform. Here in this next row from third grade at 73% up to seventh grade, the same group of kids moving through, an increase of eight percentage points of more students reaching proficiency. And then you see that change from fourth grade in 2018 to eighth grade in 2022, plus 16%.
And this was through the pandemic?
This is, so you're seeing that jump from 19 to 2022. Now, we still were teaching kids and assessing kids and doing interventions during the pandemic as well. And you're seeing those kids as they travel through the pandemic. Now, I cut out 2017 because again, they were different tests, different design. It's really not worth looking at. Let's go to math. Here's the mathematics results. Again, you can sort of see the shifts and the changes from over the three years from 2018 to now and the different changes there. I'll go through each slide and you sort of see that change. And then when we look at the longitudinal or the cohort data, again, the same group of students from 2019 to 2022, the plus three, just one percentage point drop there. But we're pretty strong in third grade, this particular cohort. And then that last one going from 69% in fourth grade in 2018 up to 78%. That's a plus nine. Again, not counting the algebra students. So we pulled out students in algebra there, so that would be higher. So that's some cohort data seen for a further time.
And is it just that every cohort, I mean, every cohort is different and our numbers aren't so large? There could be variation, but like going from 68 in grade three to 85 in grade three from 17 to 18? Like, is it something that changed in the math curriculum here or is it just simply a different color?
I think it's a different color, I would say. That's what I think. Because again, our math curriculum hasn't changed since 2018. There might be other small factors that change here and there, but overall, I don't think so, yeah. Now I'm going to show you some interesting data on these next few slides and then I'll sort of wrap this up. Unless you have other questions on any of the further slides. This is looking at, so it's one thing just to say what percentage of our students are reaching proficiency. How do we do relative to the other districts around us? So this is looking at districts in Putnam, Rockland and Westchester counties. There's about 54 districts, depending on the grade level, it might vary a little bit. And so we're looking at our percentile ranking and where we rank. So I took off the district names just so we're not comparing those. And just looking at that red bar is Byron Hills and our percentile ranking. Now, remember, a percentile means that, so if we're 87th percentile, that means we scored better than 87% of the other districts below, okay? Means there's 13 percentage above us. Now, it's relatively small numbers of 54, so it's just a handful of districts here. You also have to look at how close those bars are. That could be if we had one or two percentage points more of our students, that could shift. So they're small numbers we're talking about. So sometimes our ranking goes up and down and we play a little back and forth with some of our neighbors, which is fine. What I tend to look at is trends or any outliers. And that's the things we like to look a little more deeply in. So we look at the same data over time, is it changing a lot over time or are we pretty consistent? So you see on ELA in third grade and fourth grade, we're at the high 80th percentile. It could be, again, we toggle between the low. It could be, again, we toggle between the low 90s, the mid 80s in these percentages over time. Again, just a few percentage points can change it. On the next slide, in fifth grade, again, you see us a little bit lower than where we want to be in fifth grade. That's what I pointed out in the other data, so that's fairly consistent in our rankings as well. Because it could have been that we ranked high and that everyone scored low in fifth grade, but that's not such the case here. However, what I do see here is there's a lot of bars there that are together. So that on any given day, maybe in another year, could be up in the low 80th percentile. So it just depends. You know, we want to try to be up here a little bit, so that's something we have to look at in terms of gaps in our curriculum. Sixth grade ELA is 88th percentile. Look at seventh and eighth grade, seventh grade 90th percentile in ELA. Again, we're fairly close with a lot of bars there, particularly in eighth grade. You see a lot of these bars together. So it could just be a few little percentage points of more students, a few more students get proficiency, and that could have put us up into the mid 90s in eighth grade ELA. Sometimes we are higher in eighth grade. So look at math, third grade, first percentile. Third grade, fourth grade, third percentile. Again, a lot of bars real close there. So that tells me we're somewhere probably between the 90th and the 80rd, around that. Next one, fifth grade math, 92nd percentile. So again, that's fifth grade, which tells me we're doing well in math in fifth grade. But ELA is lower, which tells me it's more a curricular issue than it is maybe an instructional issue. Our teachers are teaching well in math. What's happening in ELA? I think it's standards. I think it's not a strong alignment in fifth grade. It's what I suspect. So again, Dave and I are taking a look at that with the faculty. Sixth grade, 94th percentile. And then seventh grade, ranked number one in the region, pretty amazing. Our seventh grade teachers were so happy to hear that. They were so nervous about it last year. And I do have to say, all of our teachers would tell me all throughout last year, Tim, we're not going to do well. We're not going to do well. And we did really well during the pandemic. So I think they were nervous, but our teachers worked really hard. But that's a pretty awesome place to be. And eighth grade math, 94th percentile. You see those two high bars there? I believe they test all of their students in eighth grade, because you can do that if you want. We chose not to double test our students. We didn't want to overtest them. And I won't go through the rest. There might be, I just want to point out one thing on the Regents. I'm going to go down to our English Regents exams and highlight a few things in the English at slide 23. Again, we are, last year, by the way, or in 2019, we were ranked number one in the region in 2019 on our English Regents exam. Fairly close. We're in the ballpark of being similar results. So I don't have the ranking yet for this year in the Regents. Once I do, I'll share that with you in a packet. But certainly, we're still maintaining continuity in Regents exams.
So whatever we're dipping in fifth grade, we're making up for.
They make up, so they come back together. And that's, you know, this fifth grade, they have middle school to get through. Again, we're looking at, you know, by the end of middle school is when we want to have kids ready for high school rigor. And I would say we are preparing our kids for that.
I guess the interesting question about fifth grade is, do we feel our curriculum may be better than what the standards are mapping to? In which case then, you know, we may be off on the test, but the kids are still on the right trajectory? Or is there a misalignment, in which case you fix it over time and solve the problem?
Yeah, that's something we got to get under the hood and look at what it is. Could I say our kids are having a good experience in fifth grade? They certainly are, you know? So, you know, it's some of those choices.
Challenged, they're engaged, right? All the things we want them to be.
You know, you could have a really engaging curriculum. It just might not be the right standards you're always aligning to, right? Or there could be some other reasons, like, you know, I just don't know yet. But, you know, it still could be a really great curriculum, but maybe not just aligned to our standards in New York. But we catch up when they get to the middle school. The question for me is, what is that transition like for kids? Are they struggling in sixth grade and having, or do they make a smooth transition anyway? And we still get them to where we need them to be in middle school? So some things we're unpacking a little bit. So trying to get under the hood and look a little closer at it. I'll just point out one more slide on slide 25. Again, our math results, Lisa and I talked a bit about that. Really proud of the teachers this year. And what we were referring to is that increase in the red bars, which is that level five. That's the mastery level, the highest level of Regents. All of our students, the blue bar is just passing, but level five is that exceeding standards. And you see that jump through the pandemic from 2019 of 60% up to 66% of students at level five is really amazing work. And I think Lisa's really proud of her staff, what they did, not only during the pandemic, the shift in the master schedule. So the math teachers were really worried about the long blocks of time, not seeing students every day. So this is with that new master schedule last year for the first time. And the math teachers still got their algebra students to perform. And so that gave them a boost of confidence, which is really great. I could go on and on at you now and talk more in detail, but I won't. I will pause because I know it's a long night. Unless I want to show one more. Let me just jump to slide, Jen, you don't mind?
No, slide 29.
Yeah, I was going to, oops, I didn't get there. Going to go down to, let me see, I want to show maybe, yes, slide 29, the advanced placement score. So I also want to show that as well. Again, showing our students in a new master schedule at the high school and going through the pandemic. This is the students scoring a level three or better. And we had, you can see the results there, 338 students taking AP exams. There were a total of 814 AP exams taken by those 338 students. And we had 90% of students last year reaching a level three or higher on an exam, which is really strong results, fairly consistent over time, a little dip last year for some reason. But this year, back sort of in our range of where we're comfortable and like to see our students doing well on those exams. That's a great metric.
Just send on 30.
Yeah.
One more.
Or 31.
Which one do you want? You tell me, I'll go wherever you want me to go.
Do 30 and 31.
We all love the science research program, and it's really remarkable. This program's been in place since 1991. We've had 573 students go through that program, right? And then out of that, 127 students, or 22% of our students have been semifinalists or top scholars. That's remarkable, almost, you know, over, about one-fifth, over a fifth, almost a quarter of our students get a top award, which is pretty remarkable, and there are 21 finalists out of that, which is just really unheard of. It's a remarkable metric. Students really achieve great things in this program.
Amazing.
And the next one, 31. This is our acceptance rate into colleges. So again, during a pandemic time, it's, you know, there's challenges of getting into schools. There's kids, you know, it's just becoming more and more competitive. We read about it all the time in the paper. So tier one and tier two schools is a ranking. When we talk about tiers, we're talking about the baron's ranking of schools. They rank, oh gosh, I don't know if it's about 3,000 schools, I believe, over 3,000 colleges. There's maybe 4,000 universities in the country. I think they rank about 3,000. This is the tier one and tier two, which make up about 11%, somewhere in the range of 11% to 12% of the colleges in the U.S. Our students, 87% of our students get into tier one and tier two colleges, which is really a remarkable, remarkable rate. So that's, and you see the increase from 2001. We've been sustaining that excellence. We go up constantly. Sustained results is what you look for, a sign of an excellent school district. And we continue to get our kids into the best colleges in the country. So it's a pretty remarkable metric.
Amazing.
And you're pretty remarkable.
Yeah, you really are. Thank you for keeping us on track. What a great presentation. And always looking to do deep dives into things that will just keep us.
And with our slide of our graduates from last year.
Oh, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Can we do these all together, or is someone speaking now that I'm?
We are going to have, who speaks about?
So we're going to, should we do that first?
So you can adopt the both tiers.
So like, should I adopt 13.2, 13.3? Should we just speak about this and adopt some more?
Yep, that's right.
Yep. So we're going to go on, oh, thank you for the report. That's great. Oh, no, we did, we did, I'm sorry, 13.1 earlier. We adopted the audit report. So we're going to just skip ahead to 13.4. And here, you've been very patient. And then we'll go back and we'll adopt all of these afterwards.
Okay, sure. Advance it.
Thanks for the patience, Andrew.
No, not at all.
It is 93.
So the tech plan is in your packet, if you want to refer to it. Andrew's going to be just summarizing and speaking to what it is. And I believe you have to accept it.
Okay.
So it's really hard to follow all these amazing administrators, but I'll do my best by being brief.
You're right.
Thank you.
So we think of our tech plan here as being fluid, so we kind of update it regularly. We don't actually update it every three years. We were required every three years ago to submit a plan to the state. So as part of the commisioners regulations, part 100, we are, we submit a plan to the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center, who reviews it for, to make sure that we have all the necessary components. And that plan is then accepted and goes to the state for final approval. Throughout the process, we work with a lot of different stakeholders to make sure that the plan sort of has input from lots of people within the community, including the administrators who sit on the team, as well as our building technology coordinators, who are teachers, who work teaching in all the buildings, as well as help to oversee technology in their buildings. And we get feedback from other groups as well. We present things regularly to our learning community facilitators, who also give us feedback throughout the process. So the plan from the state has a couple of different mandatory components, looking at a division, some sort of assessment of our current technology in the district, looking at staff development, budget allocations, and review of the evaluation process. We tend to look at it a little bit differently. We tend to not think about it as purely looking at what technology do we need to purchase? And what technology do we have, which is sort of the requirements? But we look at it more holistically and saying, what are our needs? And what are our goals? And what do we want to achieve inside the district? And then what technology do we need to do that? So our goals might look a little different than you might see in other technology plans, because we start from a different standing point. We really think about where do we want to go in the district? And then that's where we focus our technology goals. So these are our goals. We STEM for all. This is something you've heard us talk about for a long time, looking at STEM inside the district. Nine years ago, we committed to a STEM program here, a STEAM program here. We actually had a lot of funding from the BHGF to help support that initiative. And at that point, we focused a lot on the tools. We looked at coding and robotics and electronics and engineering. It's evolved over the years, and STEAM now really focuses a lot on thinking and mindsets. We think about, how do we think about computational thinking and design thinking? All the things that an engineer needs to be successful, systems thinking. And we integrate that into the STEAM as well as the tools itself. We also look at the global responsibility, global thinking. This is looking at a lot of equity and inclusion work that we do inside the district, and how we can use technology to make sure that we're creating an equitable environment for students, and students have access to the technology if they need. But it also impacts the global scholars program. And some of the stuff we're doing in the startup program as well, entrepreneurship program, and how those are really looked at from a more equitable standpoint, a global standpoint. So we're not just building solutions that are good for Byram, but solutions that are good for the world. Data privacy, as you know, we have been here many times talking about data privacy. I won't go too much into that, but over the years, we really focused on data privacy, looking at it from a systems and structural standpoint. How do we harden our defenses from a technical standpoint? Now, we've really evolved that into how do we harden our fences from a people standpoint? So we've done a lot of work over the last year and a lot this year, focusing on how do we train staff, making sure staff have all the necessary training, working with students on providing some other opportunities for them to look at data privacy and cybersecurity, as well as looking at things like monthly phishing campaigns. So we now have phishing campaigns that send fake emails, which you've all probably gotten to. And I've gotten some of you asking me about the emails. But these fake phishing emails that give us data on who's selecting and giving us some opportunities to provide some training for people that are maybe clicking on some inappropriate phishing emails. Because 85% of all attacks inside of a district start with a person. So that's been our focus this year, as well as doing monthly newsletters around data privacy that we send out to all the staff. Looking at software, through the pandemic, we added a lot of technology. But one of our criteria with adding technology has always been, will it last? We don't want to buy something that was just for the pandemic. We wanted to buy something that was useful after that. So we really think that everything that we purchased throughout that time, it really has a value going forward. What we're doing now is we're really looking at it, are we buying the right licenses and the right things for the right grade levels? There may be things where over the couple, next couple of years, we'll adjust grade levels for licensing of products, because maybe we bought it for an entire elementary, rarely only the upper elementary level students are really taking advantage of that. So we might look at, looking at how do we reduce some of those? Or change or tweak some of those licensing agreements over time. But we feel pretty satisfied that what we purchased during the pandemic is actually here to stay. And actually, we, in technology, really don't like the, how do we go back to the way things were? We kind of like cringe with that. We really, we really encourage people to use the motto, how do we move forward? And that's really what we're looking at. How do we move forward with the technology that we have and the curriculum that we have? And I think you heard that tonight with other administrators, too. It's not about going back, it's about taking what we learned and moving forward. And that's.
The data breach that happened in the spring by that vendor, that was a regional thing that involved not only us, but many districts. Any, any conclusion from that? Or like, not only about the situation, but the process? And I guess it involved BOSIs, and it was, you know, it was a big deal.
Yeah. So that right now is being handled at the state, and the state has sort of been doing an investigation in that. There haven't been a final report on what actually came of that. I will say, though, that vendor, that vendor was purchased by a much larger company, who's, who's put a lot of resources into their products. That vendor actually has eSchool and a few other products that we use around the district. But Renaissance Learning purchased the company that was, that had that product. And they said the reason they bought it was for EduClima and for eSchool, which are the two products that we use from that vendor. And so they've already committed a lot of resources into there. And I'm pretty hopeful in the way that they've actually been approaching the acquisition. Unlike the acquisitions in the past that I've seen with some of these products, where they bought it and sort of let it dwindle, I'm really seeing already that they're investing some time and resources there. Any other questions about the technology plan in general?
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna. Yes, we're gonna adopt, we're gonna go back. And can I have a motion to adopt 13.2, the adoption of the 2023-24 budget materials? 13.3 enrollment report? Does anybody, do you want to mention anything about the local enrollment report?
No, it's just bed stay numbers.
Bed stay.
They're in there.
Okay. And thank you so much again, Andrew, approval of district technology plan 2022.
Wait, Andrew, you can't leave until they approve.
Yeah, we have to approve 20. 2025. We're kidding, we're kidding. 14.5. I thought you were.
Independent hardship.
Say your waiver.
Yes.
And that's it.
Second?
All those in favor? Thank you, Andrew. Nice job, Andrew. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay. Brings us to 14.1, superintendent staff report.
All right, well, we've all talked too much. So Tim is going to put up my slides, but I would just like to say, hot off the press, before I even get to student highlights, congratulations to Chloe Bernstein and Jenna Kleinerman. They captured the section one double tennis title tonight. According to Rob Kastagna, these ladies kicked off homecoming with a title. Excellent stuff. So, and now for other student highlights, just quickly, because I can't go without. Eight commended students in the National Merit Program. I shared this with the board. Sydney Black, Peter Mon, Caleb Palopoleli, I never say that right. Massimo, Kalella Albino, Josh Arnold, Chris Yu, Max Titelbaum, and Eliza Hammond. And so these seniors are among 34,000 commended students. They placed among the top 50,000 students in entering scholarship competitions, taking the PSAT. Congrats. What a great picture of them.
Yeah.
Any kids in Byram Hills that are good-looking, I just noticed that. They're also good-looking. Chloe Bernstein, we just spoke about her, but she also varsity tennis award for Con Edison Athlete of the Week for September 26th, for outstanding achievement inside and outside the classroom and on the field. She seems, this seems to be her week.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead. And this is really interesting. You may remember Ken Kaplan, he was a special educator here who retired. He's been doing this Lynch's Crossing thresholds. And he has, our students, Nicole and Tyler Lynch, have been actually tutoring kids remotely in Nairobi. And you could see Tyler up in the upper right-hand corner and the kids that he's actually working with at the time. So thank you, Ken, for continuing to give our kids opportunities like this, even after retirement. It's fantastic. And Ken is so energized by that work. And we, I spoke about this last year, but Indiana Engverman is a New York State School Music Association, all-state mixed chorus performance amongst those who auditioned and was selected based on his solo audition. And the performances will be held in Rochester from December 1st. from December 1st to 4th, and he is an alternate degree, which is a big deal. Pediatric cancer drive, everybody should have their gold shirts still. Byram Hills conducted pediatric cancer awareness, and they raised over $4,000, and the proceeds are going to be donated to various charities to protect our most vulnerable population. And so many people were involved. The Athletics Department, PTSA, Youth Against Cancer Club, Great Activities Board for their help with the event. Go ahead, Tim, we have more pictures of that, too. Yeah, it's really cute. And 32 high school students showcased at the outdoor art show in Armoc, and I have to say, we've never had that many kids present artwork before. And one of our students, Samantha Melowitz, came and told me that somebody bought one of her pictures for money that she never thought. She, and she was talking about, you know, the person who bought it and his interests in art, and he said, I need to buy this right now, because one day, I'm going to be seeing your art and I'm going to be picking it up. And she said, and I didn't tell him that I wanted to go into, I think she's like, like neurology or something.
Yeah.
He's a winner, all the piece.
Yeah. So great, but anyway, thank you to the art faculty members, they were huge in that. We had a beautiful World Languages Honor Society, it was virtual, which initially was to my chagrin, because I want everything in person, but when you saw the virtual presentation and the kids speaking in multiple languages, it was amazing, and it was actually something better suited for that. The kids missed the chance to be at the event, though, and get the diploma, so all that shared, it was outstanding. Melissa Stahl did an amazing job, and the kids who were taking more than one language, who could speak fluently and beautifully, and both of those languages, was absolutely amazing. They inducted, what was it, 70-something? 70 some odd students were inducted.
70, 70 seniors.
70, okay, great. And we have Spirit Week. I did hear tonight that our field hockey team did not win their game, but they, they are the best at what they do anyway, even if they don't win, according to me. So we have our activities that are set up for the entire week tomorrow. I mean, we've had activities already, but tomorrow we have quite a bit going on, also Thursday and Friday night, and don't forget the Byram Hills Education Foundation hosting their, is it Saturday or Sunday?
It's Sunday.
It's Sunday, but I think in the PTSA piece that came out, it said Saturday, but with the right date. So we have to.
We have to, yeah, maybe re-disseminate that.
And go Bobcats, and also Lara, can you talk about, we didn't have it, about the club with all the kids that came out?
Can we talk about it next?
Yes.
We'll talk about it next.
It didn't make the cut.
That's okay.
It's great.
It's a little preview of the.
Preview.
Yeah, the Godot Club.
But anyway, just really proud of our kids all the time, and thanks to everyone who's coming out this week for a homecoming week. Hopefully, this weather will hold out for us, and these kids will have all these opportunities to play.
Very excited for the week.
Yes, and thank you to Kelly and Steve on all of their free time and securing all of these lights.
Yes.
There was a lot of manpower involved in that.
Okay, any other board reports?
Tim cannot talk anymore.
No.
Kelly cannot talk anymore.
For years on, we spoke, we met, and we are continuing to investigate modified sports and how we engage and keep our student athletes engaged from modified straight through to varsity.
I have a PTSA report. They signed a data privacy agreement, which will allow them, the PTSA access to the classless data before the first day of school, which has been a real sticking point for them, because it made it very difficult for the class parents to communicate with the classes before back to school night, because they didn't have that, but. They approved their budget, membership right now in PTSA closed at around 50%, and we had some discussions about how to boost that. This, I think, is some confusion, maybe, with parents as to the difference between class dues and PTSA membership, and we talked a little bit about that. Book fairs are coming, they are still looking for volunteers for book fairs, if anybody's interested. Spirit Week, we just talked about. Halloween window painting is October 22nd.
They're doing so many things.
Family holiday pictures, there's still, it's a fundraising event, and there are still spots open, if anybody's looking for holiday card pictures, and what else? Oh, they are also looking for volunteers for, to work concessions at Spirit Week, at homecoming, if anybody's interested in the public.
I think I'm there Friday.
There Friday. All right, okay, any other board reports?
Just very quickly, Jen and I actually were at a West Pilot event, where it was a roundtable with other board members and superintendents around Westchester County on different topics, and the one takeaway is, I was sitting at a table where we discussed community outreach and ideas that different districts have to just involve their community in different ways and have a dialogue with the community, so it'll be perfect for our offsite, so.
Great, wonderful, thank you so much.